We'll call the April 20, 2023 Reno County Planning Commission meeting to order. Staff, will you call the roll?
Short failure.
Here.
Stan?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Macklin?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Gertsen?
Here.
Welcome, everyone. It's been awhile since we've been face to face. For me, I have not been here yet in 2023, so it's been kind of a longer break than for most of you. Tonight, we're going to be talking about draft text amendments. But first, I trust that you've had a chance to review your packets, and then those packets were minutes from the January 19 meeting. Staff will enter, or excuse me, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval as the minutes were issued.
Second. Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the January 19 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Okay, we'll just move into our new business. We've got staff has prepared some draft of commercial solar energy systems regulations. We've all had a chance to review those, we'll get a chance to discuss. Mark, would you like to give us a little background?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of you who don't know, on April 11th of this year, the county commissioners, they passed a resolution and a moratorium that prohibited the submittal of a commercial solar farm conditional use permit application or installing one in the unzoned area of the county. That resolution also directed staff and the planning commission to develop solar regulations that would govern the placement of solar farms. The resolution lasts for the rest of this year, so we have the time to review regulations and get something that's workable without, you know, the potential pressure of a conditional use permit hanging over our heads. And so we have the time that we need to do the research and the discussions to get something that we feel is amenable. At this time, you should only focus on developing those regulations. Whether these regulations are really countywide or not even implemented at all, it should not be a concern of you guys right now. You should just be focusing on, here is the task at hand to develop the solar regulations. We don't know what they're going to be implemented at, whether they're going to do countywide or whether we would even prohibit that, okay? If it is decided, you know, to go countywide or even to prohibit them potentially, you know, then that's going to require a different series of text amendments to our comprehensive plan and even our zoning regulations. And so at this time, we're just focusing on the regulations right now. At some point in the future, we may get, you know, a direction on where to go, but right now, we're just looking at the regulations. These documents, they were developed based on regulations from several counties throughout the state and also publications that I've read through the American Planning Association. I would just say that in the end, you know, we need to really do what's best for Reno County and develop our own set of guidelines and regulations and not necessarily copy what some other county did and what they feel is best for their county. We need to do what we feel is best for our county. The regulations, as you may know, for those of you that sat through the wind regulation development, that was the template, if you will, that I used to kind of develop these solar regulations. I picked that because I felt like that format worked and I felt like it was really well-received by everybody, by the planning commission and the county commissioners. So that was the basis of the document that you have before you. Lastly, I guess I would say that if you start receiving input or discussion from citizens in the county or elsewhere, to please, you know, just have them direct their comments to me either through mail or email. That way, I can kind of put all those comments together and then each one of you can see all the comments that may come before the whole board instead of having individual discussions with other people. And some people may not get that conversation, others will. And so I'd rather have all of the information be funneled through me so I can distribute it to this board. Any questions at this point on what I've said or so, or the direction?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay. At that point, then, I can start off with the first couple of basic ones, basic text amendments, if you will. They're very simple here. So the first amendment is actually to our table of contents page. It will be adding Article 25 to the zoning regulations. So what you have listed here is where you'll find various sections of that article. And now, keep in mind that this will change as we start making amendments and adjusting things. Hopefully, when we get to a document that we believe is ready for a public hearing, then those numbers will be set and then that will be the final document. But that's just part of the process you go through with a text amendment, especially when you're adding a different article. And so any questions on that? Just keep in mind that those titles and page numbers can and probably will change throughout this process. The second amendment is part of this process will be to Article 15. And all I did was give the board the first four pages, if you will, of that article. I didn't give you the whole thing. What you will see is on page 15-4 highlighted in red, there will be a 14A created. 14A is going to be a commercial solar energy system, subject to the provisions of Article 25. Right above is number 14. You'll see the latest text amendment that we did regarding wind. And so obviously, there wasn't a number in between, so I just made it the 14A. That will let people know that a commercial solar farm requires a conditional use permit. So those are the two very basic text amendments associated with that. You know, the real work will come in the next text amendment, which is Article 25. So I'll turn it back to the chairman to kind of lead the discussion at that point.
Are there any questions for staff on the table of contents for the first two drafts discussed? Pretty straightforward, pretty easy to understand those. For the Article 25 draft that we have before, those that were involved in the commercial wind regulation discussions, we went through these paragraph by paragraph, and I believe that probably was a pretty systematic way of going through it. We're going to keep that format so we can kind of keep our thoughts organized and move on. That way, we can kind of complete our review in a systematic fashion, just so you kind of know where we're headed and whatnot. Open discussion, I encourage it because we need all of our ideas to put this together so staff can put together a solid set of regulations that we can first hear from the public and then also present to the county commission. I'll just open up our discussion with one more note that Mark touched on. We want to just look at these regulations as they are, not necessarily as they are, where they will be applied, whether it's countywide or whether in the zone district or both. We also want to keep in mind that this is the land use, not necessarily what the developer will be doing outside of it, but other than whether the land is going to be suitable for this development. So just keep that in mind as we move forward. I'll just start off, we'll go paragraph by paragraph. If you have anything to say, please speak up. I'll just start with the first paragraph, the 25-101, the purpose and intent. Any conversation there? The next one, 102?
I make, whoops, sorry. I was waiting for the board first. The only comment that I would make would be in 25-101, too, that the guidelines do not apply to private solar energy systems. And so as proposed right now, we are not regulating an individual property owner's ability to place rooftop solar or ground mounted solar systems on their own private property. We're dealing with more of the commercial end. And I think, as you'll see in the definitions, we'll try and hopefully adequately define what is a commercial solar farm versus what is a private individual solar farm. So I just wanted to make it clear to the board that this isn't regulating anything to do with your own private property as far as you want to put, say, solar on your own house. That'll still be permitted by right without any kind of permit from me. The only thing that I would add is that if you're in a floodplain, you would need a floodplain permit from me to put a ground mount on there. So just want to make sure we're, as it is written now, we're focusing strictly on commercial.
I did have a question about private and commercial, how that line is defined. If it's by size, generation of kilowatt hours, or, you know, it's a private system, a private install, I could have how many panels? I don't know.
Save your question to 25-103. So it's coming up, and you'll see how we define private and commercial, but it is not based off of just the size or the amount of kilowatts that you're producing or so, anything like that. We'll discuss it in 25-103, if that's okay. Did you guess that? That was your question.
We'll go to there. 25-103. You'll defer for later, right? Yeah. Gotcha. Paragraph 102.
Okay. We'll move on. Pretty much, that was just pretty much saying that, you know, you're going to comply with Article 8, which is our development guideline regulation, and it's going to comply with Article 15, which is the conditional use permit guidelines. And then it also, again, clearly defines that a private solar energy system does not require zoning permit from me as proposed with these amendments. And then Article 2104, for those of you who may not recall, that has to do with your board's ability to modify certain regulations within our existing zoning regulations. So you remember things like requiring paving for a development or requiring the number of party stall. Those are all things that you, as a board, have the ability to waive the regulatory requirement and require something less if you so see fit. This article, as in wind, says that this board does not have the ability to waive those requirements, that Article 25 or so would stick as proposed, and you can't use that other article to waive any other type of requirement unless there's something written in the document here that gives you that authority. Okay?
Okay. 103, definitions. I think this is where Garth, you'll add some questions.
Yeah. I knew that was in there, and I guess maybe the key word there is primary purpose is not for sale or delivery. I think there's still some gray area for a private install as far as selling that power. And that's part of the rationalization now is to help pay for the system as you do get to sell some of that excess generation. So as long as I'm not selling more than I'm consuming, is that the tipping point there?
The way this reads is you can't sell any. It's for your private use only.
It says the primary purpose is not for the sale or delivery.
Right.
Which indicates, to me, that would mean that as long as you're doing that, you know, if you have some excess, you could sell it or whatever, because that's a secondary use, not a primary use.
So if you're a net zero with your solar, and then you happen to come up with some with extra?
You sell, you know, sometimes the utilities will buy it back they used to. I don't know what they're doing anymore, but you'd also envision a situation where, say, you have a large business entity operated by an individual who places a bunch of solar panels out there to supply his business primarily, and maybe he goes overboard a little bit and has side agreement to sell some of the excess to somebody else, acting as kind of a quasi-commercial thing. Do we need to put a limit on kilowatts, or do we need to stress that this is for only use by the individual and it's not used in any commercial sense? I mean, are you going to prohibit a business then from putting in solar to supplement their electrical needs, you know, without going through the commercial end of it?
On the wind, excuse me, sir. And on the wind side, we had a certain limit, you could only predict, you know, the tire would only put so many kilowatts out.
Yeah. If it was under that, then it was considered private.
Yeah. I don't know if that's something, I truly was looking for some sort of specification that said private or commercial. Because it really isn't. It's kind of, I came back to how this was written, going, okay, primary purpose. If I was going to put, if I had 5,000 square feet of roofline in my place and I put every possible square foot that was, had an opportunity, and then I might even put some ground bearing to where I could become net zero, and I would see that as the primary focus. And then if I came up with some surplus, my primary purpose isn't to supply the grid. My primary purpose is to go net zero with my farmstead, and then if there was surplus, it could be purchased out right after the fact.
Or you could sell to a neighbor.
Yeah, it's not, you know, it's a fine line.
People are very creative, I guess. I mean, you gotta look at, try to look at the, anticipate the angle.
Well, if it goes through, if it stops the meter turning, your supplier regulates what goes in and out of that meter. That's how, I mean, that's where it's flowing. If it's flowing backwards, if your meter's going backwards, it's not going to, your neighbor might be consuming it.
Yeah, it's going backwards.
But it's not getting sold to your neighbor. You're not in the business for that.
That's how it works. As soon as the sun shines and demand is low, it generates more electricity, and it just goes back into the grid, and the next door neighbor might get it.
What you're thinking is, if 20 panels is enough to run your house, guy puts up 50 thinking he can sell a bunch of power back to the power company. But it's not economically feasible to do that now, because they don't pay, they pay you the wholesale rate. You know, if you could sell them back, great, but you wouldn't spend any extra money to do that.
So what about a larger scale? Like instead of an individual household or a farm, you have like a commercial or industrial property, and they want to build enough panels to supply their entire needs, which may be in the megawatts. Do we want to treat that the same as we do, Garth parking a couple in his garage?
I mean, what, because they're not commercial and they're not selling.
Right. They're not selling. And they may be, okay, so what if they have enough that they are selling some that might be incidental in their view, but might be more than I use in a year?
And it all depends on how much the sun shines.
Yeah.
I did read in one, like, where 250 kilowatts and under was small or personal, and above that was put as commercial in one place where I read or looked.
How would we, all right, let's just, we had a vacation here before the end of the year. The guy has Yoder smokers. He's out in a county, okay? He's out in Habit. He has roofline, he has a lot of roofline, and he decides, just to your point, he's going to put a bunch on top of his building. Has he now become a commercial and a solar energy producer?
Not in the definition we've got.
Okay, but that's my question. How do we, do we even want to get into that? Because his building already fits the use of the land, okay? We have not regulated whether he has a vent pipe on the top of that building. We don't regulate whether he has an air conditioning unit on that building. Why should we regulate whether he has a solar panel on that building? My question.
So far, the way this is wrote is you can't sell it to anybody. It's for your own use. You guys are talking about three different ones. One for your own use, one if you have your own business and you supply that, or one that's a commercial. You're talking about three, so far we only have one. So to control those somewhat, you're going to have to come up with the limits of what they produce. What is that for resident? What is that for business? What is that for commercial? I guess is where you're kind of going. Is that right?
I think so. I don't know that we need to be there, but it's sure something to think about.
Well, we need to cover it all. You need, not, you need to cover it all.
Yeah.
So you're talking about three different things. Residential, business that you own on the same property, commercially you're selling it.
Or is it, you say a business you own, or could you just say a business? You could have a corporation that owns the thing.
Then it goes back.
And they want to put it on for their own consumption, but that's no different than a business you own, to me, as far as the use of it.
Well, I mean, I don't know about you producing at your house and you wire it.
No, no, I'm talking about, you know, say you have some kind of a manufacturing plant that is owned by a corporation, and they decide to go solar, put solar panels up on their roof to supplement, you know, their energy usage. So that's not commercial, because they're not selling it to the.
So that's the middle one between what I was saying.
Exactly. And it's not, it's not owned by an individual, is what I'm getting at. It's a business.
During the week, they're probably going to use all their power. Saturday and Sunday, when their plant's shut down.
They're not.
They might be selling some back.
To the utility, probably. You know, that's the thing.
But I don't think anybody's going to put up more panels than what it takes to run their facility.
No, because I don't know for sure.
Not right now, but. Because there's not, I mean, right now, there's not enough money in.
Well, what happens if the incentives change? And is, do we want to treat, like, say, down in Habit, so, you know, you have 10,000 square foot of shop space and you stick solar panels on top? Do we want to treat that the same as if you buy out all the empty lots in Habit across the street from your plant and you fix 10, 20, 30,000 square feet of solar panels on the ground? But it's still, you're still doing it technically for your consumption. Yeah. Do we want to treat those the same? Because one's changing the land and the other's.
Goes back to the land use.
Yeah, there, I go back where Don said, is we've got three different categories we've got to deal with. And that middle and that business is what you're talking about, and there we've got to look at those, the roof mount versus the ground mount, or the limits on how much ground mount we can put in, those kinds of stuff.
Because I think currently, as it's proposed, a ground mount, a private ground mount one is treated the same as a rooftop, right?
Yeah. Yes. So like, if I want to put solar on my house, I've got some square footage on my roof. Like, I also have a big tree on that side. If I don't want to cut the tree down, then I've got, I've got plenty of land I could put ground mounts on. You know, I don't have any neighbors over there, so they're not going to care, you know, so.
It's hard to put a not to exceed number in there.
Well, maybe, maybe, I mean, unless we, you know, talk to, you know, some other people that maybe have more knowledge about capacities, requirements, and things like that. I mean, you know, we're no experts in the solar world by any means.
The next step is with a limitation like that, how is that monitored, reported?
Enforced.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who's going to be the meter police on that one?
Mark.
Mark with a little drone.
We're going to buy him a badge.
It's not going to happen.
Mark's assistant.
Yeah.
We're going to get him out of this. There we go. Expanding our responsibilities.
She likes that.
I think, you know, I can, I've rolled this around, and primary use spells pretty much, there's some gray area, I'll grant you that there's some gray area in primary use, but primary use spells out that you're using that to power your well, your house, your shop, your business. Primary use is, and you're not, your full intent is not to send it back to the grid. However, we know that in the off hours that the plant isn't running, or what have you, there's, there might be an opportunity for some surplus. Well, that's not your primary goal. Your primary goal is to go net zero.
But the other issue you have on that definition, it says individually owned system, which that would then prohibit a commercially owned, like a corporation or LLC or some other form of ownership.
That wasn't the intent.
Yeah, I know, but that's the way it reads. Yeah.
So that's something you might want to change.
I want to change. And what about solar leases, where a company owns the panels on your house, and you have an agreement to purchase the power at a discounted rate for a period of 20 years? Now, is that considered a commercial because technically the owner of the house doesn't own the panel?
Oh, boy. I don't know. It'd be like leasing a car. You don't really own your car while it's on a lease plan, but you get to.
Right, but it feels like your car that's in your garage, right?
I don't know, I don't, I, that's a little, that's, I understand where you're headed.
So does it need to be defined as for the benefit of the owner or occupant of the parcel in which it's on?
Well, this definition kind of is the reverse reflection of that. It says it's not for sale or delivery to a utility company, so I guess, at least for me, that implies it's for use by who's generating it.
You could kind of get, you know, working your thing in there, I mean, ignoring the word individually right now, because I don't like that word, but keeping it infra for sake at this point, you could say an individually owned, non-commercial solar energy system, an individually owned or leased, non-commercial solar energy system, which generates electricity consumption only for the property where the generator, electricity is generated. You could just throw that forward, lease. That would cover your area, you know, and we still have that individually owned thing, which, you know, if you have a different type of entity that owns it, you know, then that's what we need to change the wording on.
So let me ask you guys something. We had the three different things, residential, in between, and commercial. So let's just go back to Habit. Let's say the law enforcement center, which is huge. Let's say they put in their own system to provide their electricity for this then. What makes the difference between that and a residential? It's not commercial.
No.
So I don't know if it takes three.
I don't know. The thing, difference I see is the scale, and particularly if you're going with ground mounted panels, because those are going to be more, I guess you could say, more intrusive to the adjoining property owners than a roof mount. You know, that would be my main concern in that situation, Don. You know, which, I know there's some way to, I mean, sure, we could finagle some language to provide for that, you know, with setbacks or screening or whatever, you know, so that it's not.
Mark, as you have developed this, was there another source, another county, another state, or another entity that is, that you had to lead you in any of these directions?
No. I mean, I was trying to keep it as simple as possible with the intent of not regulating the individual person or the individual business that wants to have solar on his building and. solar on his building and use that power for his own personal use. The intent was to say, if you're going to have a parcel of land with solar panels on it and sell it to another entity that's not for the consumption of that person on that property, then you got to go through the conditional use permit. I think.
That's what I was hearing.
Yeah, that, that was the intent, is to leave the individual residential person alone, leave the business alone that wants to put eight or 10, 12 panels on their property to run their, their generators, what have you, you know, leave other ones alone, but go after the, the commercial solar farms that are going to be selling power to, to the East Coast, for example. That's, that was the, the intent. One thing I hadn't thought of, probably, i- is like some of the examples here that Steve has given, is like if you have a, a vacant tag or a parcel somewhere, use Habit, for example, it has been brought up here, and you want to fill that entire parcel with ground mounted solar panels. That's the only land use that's going to be on that individual property. You know, there's not going to probably say be a building, so a, a company is going to buy several parcels down that are vacant. Should that be regulated? I could, I could see a situation where maybe that, that should be because of, like you said, the, um, the potential impact on the neighbor now, albeit that's an industrial area, but yeah.
So maybe ask a question on that, Mark. Is it possible, like on the, this, this 1033, if we changed the wording and said a, a non-commercial solar energy system, which is owned or leased by an individual or business for consumption only for the property where the electricity is generated, which the primary person, blah, blah, blah? Well, that would take in both, both types of ownership there, but that doesn't deal with what we're just discussing here. Is it possible to handle that as a, you know, 1033A or something like that and put in a blurb about ground mount units, you know, restricting, you know, with certain restrictions on those that relates to adjoining property and whatnot?
Do you, does this board, I guess, does this board care if there is a business on the property and then a portion of that property is used for solar, for their own private use? Or do you care that it's a vacant piece of ground next to a business and then you're just going to fill it full of panels? Is there a difference there?
I don't really, I mean, that's why I'm saying if we have some safeguards to the adjoining property owners to provide, you know, setbacks, landscaping, whatever, so, you know, it's not an eyesore.
And we'll be talking about that later on.
That wouldn't be in there for.
That's in the commercial aspect.
That wouldn't be regulated by.
But this would have to be a subset of your definition of individually owned, I think.
So like, for example, down in Habit, if, if someone were to do that on a square block, if they were treated as a private solar energy system, that they would sidestep that entire process? As written, right?
But then, then you get to the case of an individual, say in a home, you can't provide huge setbacks because, you know, they may not have it on a property line, and they may not be able to do a roof mount, they want to do a ground mount, and suddenly with the setbacks that you specify for a business, they can't do it on an individual because it prohibits that. It's too big. Where are you going?
But we wouldn't be regulating an individual or a business's private solar.
But they're worried about a business large enough to take up acres and put it on there for a business, and then the neighbors that affects.
What about land use classifications? We've got ag, we've got rural residential, we've got ag, and we've got ag residential, and we've got commercial.
No.
We don't have that, we don't have commercial?
No.
Okay? We've got ag.
We have ag and residential zoning districts. Now, there's a multitude of, of land use classifications that the appraiser's office uses, but as far as zoning regulations, just ag and residential.
Maybe we need a commercial, though.
I, you know, you could potentially add something, I don't know how yet, but, you know, where if it's a, if the only land use occurring on a tract of ground, a parcel of ground, is that solar, then you could maybe put it under a conditional use permit review, but I think that's going to be difficult to, to distinguish that right now.
Well, or is it possible? I like the idea of a conditional use permit, because that would allow us to evaluate those on a case by case basis. And, you know, I guess it's deciding how would you set the parameters which would require the, the CUP.
Looks to me like if somebody puts a bunch of panels on an empty parcel, then it's a commercial solar farm.
What if they're just being themselves?
But if it's on their, if it's on the same parcel that their factory's on, then they're using it primarily for their, it's primarily for their own use.
Give you a separate parcel right next door.
Yeah.
To their operation.
Yeah.
Or you mean just a.
But I mean, if they own both of them.
Yeah, they own, there's no problem. Or if they buy one, you know, if they buy one just to, for solar panel, okay, but, you know.
But then that's why we have a conditional use permit. I mean, if you had a, if you had somebody that was going to put some kind of a plant that was a real power user, data center, or, you know, aluminum processing plant or something, you know, and they, to have room for enough panels, they had to go across the street, then couldn't a conditional use permit be used for something like that?
Well, I guess, what's the, you know, predominantly, solar panels go on the roof in, in residential. You don't see, you see very few ground mount units in residential, right?
I think it depends on more urban or more rural.
Exactly.
Well, we're looking at more rural areas, because that's what we're zoning.
And probably say not as much as you think.
Right.
I, I have several calls from solar companies and a lot of them are ground mount.
I'm, I'm just.
I, I'd say it may be, you know, 50/50, actually, you know, because I, I get both.
You know, I, around the back of my mind is saying, well, gee, we could, we could require a CP for ground mount, if there's any ground mounts involved.
Yeah, then you'd be.
Or, you know.
So if it's on an existing structure, they can install solar by right?
Right.
But if it's ground mount, then even if it's for private use, then, then we route it through the conditional use process?
It's a lot of process for something.
Yeah, then, then we're going back to, we might as well change our building, our accessory buildings back down to a.
Yeah, that's a lot of, that's a lot of process.
Yeah, we need something to do, right? I mean, somebody that's going to put a, a ground mount in, of course, the ground mounts are a little more efficient if they're the ones that can track.
Track, yeah.
Yeah.
So you don't have to have as many panels.
And you can keep that nice tree over your house.
And because of the trees on your property, the ground mount might be a better idea, but I don't think we should discourage that.
And you have more flexibility and location on a ground mount.
Yeah.
You get along, you know, basic sound, basically.
You can, you can maintain and clean them.
We're getting into the weeds a little bit on what, what sort, what they look like.
We, I think we need to a certain point in this stage of the regulations, that we need to try to anticipate some of these issues.
Mark, do you have any idea, like, wild guess, how many ground mount installations there are in Reno County?
No. I mean, I do get frequently calls from solar companies wanting to install ground and roof for individual property owners. They're asking if permits required, but, um, yeah, as a, I, I couldn't even begin to take a wild guess.
And your answer to that has always been?
No.
Not required?
Unless in a flood plain. So we, we don't regulate it. We don't regulate it, and at this point in the game, I prefer to leave it that way and not regulate it.
Oh, I understand. I fully understand.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find a way to accomplish everything without, you know, particularly when it comes to more of the business aspect, you know, where that's the one where I can see issues possibly coming up with, you know, large ground mount installations. And, you know, if there, if there's no regulation on them, you know, I mean, they set them right up next to the property line if they wanted to.
Yeah, like, say you had a large industrial that once came going back down to Habit, and they buy 10 acres at the end of the glider port, and cover them in panels on the approach.
So they fly all the pilots.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Because at, at this point, there'd be no way that we would even be aware that's happening.
Well, in the city, the setback is the same as if it's a building. For ground mounts.
For ground mounts, yes.
It's like checked.
Okay.
Well, so far, the way this is writ, until you change it, if it's not just for the resident, then it's going to take a, it's, it's going to be regulated. So anything beyond the resident for a business, it's going to be regulated.
If it's, unless it's sold.
If the energy is being resold, yes.
Sold, if it's being sold?
Right.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, converted, sold to a, a consumer of electricity other than the owner, or to a utility, so, yeah.
So now you got to.
So we're, we're.
So what does a resident mean?
Yeah, that's, that's coming where we're at.
Business versus residential, residential, you don't have a lot of issues normally, I don't think. Business, you know, there you've got, you know, I think there are some potential issues there. Because they're going to have a lot, if they're going to go solar, they're going to put in a lot more panels because they're probably have a lot heavier electrical usage.
So you're only concerned about the ground mounts, and if it's a business, no matter how large it is, if they put them on their roofs, that's fine?
Yeah.
So you just want to regulate the ground mounts?
Yeah, that's kind of where the, the ground mounts on a business is not residential.
Kind of think the concern is that, in theory, the way that it's written, there's voiced a chance that a very large consumer of electricity could build a large ground mount installation, and there would be no review process or any way to stop them.
Could you limit the ground mounts to the square foot area of their roof? They got, they got 100,000 square foot roof, they could have 100,000 square feet of panels.
That doesn't control, you know, setbacks or anything else. You can still put them right up against the property line. That's what I'm, my, my, my concern about the ground mounts, is that there are no safeguards for the, the adjacent property owners. Other than that, I don't care how much they put in, you know. So there's some way to make a, a subset, a definition of a, a non, a non-commercial, non-individually owned unit who wants to put in ground mounts would require a CUP. Just throwing out an idea like that.
Say those words again, now.
Okay, a, a, an entity that is a, not a commercial solar system, or whatever your wording is, or is not an individual residential user that wants to put in ground mount systems for their facility or whatever it is, then that might require a CUP. So we'd have the ability to regulate that on setbacks and whatnot, landscaping, whatever we needed. To kind of help protect the adjacent, adjacent property owners. Just like we require fencing on, you know, parking lots and stuff like that.
Maybe all ground mounts need to be regulated other than for residential.
Yeah, that's, that would be one way to word it, yeah.
I'm just throwing this out there. This is you guys.
Well, I understand. I'm just trying to find the right wording, and I appreciate that.
It's my job. So, so as a.
But, but we still, we still haven't determined the, the difference between resident, I mean, you have, there's some verbiage here that says, okay, residential or a business. You've got, is that two panels is a residential, and anything three or more is a business that's not, that's, that's primary use is to consume it and not sell it?
Well, what determines it is how much it's, you're supposed to only be putting up what supplies your house, or your, your.
Okay, then, then who's going to regulate that?
Nobody.
Well, we're not going to sit here and ask, you, you're not going to ask me how many kilowatts I use a, a year. So we're not going to ask a business owner that same question. It's none of our business.
But I mean, if they're, you know, if the only thing they're getting is for compensation for any excess generation would be whatever they sell back to the utility, you know.
It goes back to that primary purpose is not for sale or delivery standard.
Right. I mean, that's like, I got a, I had a neighbor when I lived in town, and he put eight panels up on his roof. I told him when he finished that, I said, Bill, when you come back, you know, I want to see your, your first full month's electric bill. And so about a month later, he came banging on my door, and he said, got my electric bill? I said, what was it? He said, minus $200. I said, what was the last month? Plus 150. So he had pretty good savings. So, but, you know, then I think they changed how they pay for it, so.
There are, there are, there are some suppliers that don't pay at all. They just say, thank you very much, you have a long, smart life.
Yes, yes. But.
Well, you know, that's not our business either.
You know, I don't, I don't think that a, an individual or a business is going to spend the money it takes to put in an extreme amount of panels, so there's a huge amount of excess generation that they're going to basically sell to the, you know, the local, their local utility company. Economically, I don't think it's feasible.
I think that's the way it is now, but that's not the direction that solar generation is going. It's getting more efficient.
Oh, yeah, the panels are.
And so I could see where somebody who's, you know, maybe a single person, and they've got 10 acres of ground, and, you know, we're five, 10 years down the road, and I can get a lot of panels on my 10 acres and generate, I can have some income from that.
I can sell that to the utility company, and, yeah.
No different than an oil well.
Right.
But then, then are those, their primary purpose of production, you know, for residential personal use or not? No. If they've gone that extreme. But of course, then you got a, that's an enforcement issue.
You'd limit it to the square foot of their house, of their roof.
Yeah.
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, we ought to try to proceed so that we get all the way through this today, recognize our objective wasn't to finalize anything today. Rather, because I think we are somewhat bogged down, bringing our minds all to the one meaning.
Agreed. Everybody okay with that? Kind of, we do, we are studying on, on, on items number, number two and three, under 25103. Study that and bring that to our next discussion?
Yeah, I think that's good.
There's your homework. So then. I'd just bring your attention right quick then on, on four and five and other definitions. A facility is going to be a project that's received the conditional use permit approval, and a project is something that hasn't. So you'll see those two terms throughout the whole entire document, and so you need to be aware of what I'm talking about. A project is something that's, has not received its approval when, after the, after the approval, then toward the latter half of the document, you'll see it turn into, you know, a, a facility.
Question there, Mark. I mean, is the, the project is, you're assuming at that point, they have submitted an application for a CUP?
Yes.
So maybe we can say that project is a system which has submitted an application but not yet received a, approved conditional use permit.
What do we have now? Two that we've approved that they haven't built yet?
One.
One they haven't built.
Dora.
Yeah.
One of Dora hadn't been built yet?
No.
By knowledge.
My knowledge.
It hasn't.
Yeah.
I drove by there, I don't know, a month ago, maybe.
Oh, wow.
And they have wheat coming up, so. Don't plan on doing it before July.
Survey flags and that's it.
Yeah, no, I didn't see any flags.
All right. Just kind of go quickly down the list. We talked about facility and project. Number six, solar panel and that's pretty self-explanatory what, what that is. Number seven, participating landowner. This, this looked very familiar to me from wind regulations.
Seven, eight, nine.
Yep, all, yeah, all three of those did, so I don't, I, we'll kind of lump our discussion over seven, eight, nine. Anything anybody wants to add or, or has any discussion on, on those three? Twenty-five, 104, Mark already addressed that to some, to some extent, so I don't think we need to, need to run through that.
You got to follow the statutory procedure to receive a conditional use permit approval.
Twenty-five, 105, circumstances requiring application of a commercial solar energy system.
So.
So we need to.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Jump right in, I'll, I'll follow up, play, I'll play second caller.
So as I was saying, in letter A, this is saying that everything that's out there right now, you know, is exempt from the conditional use permit approval process. Everything that's not in progress right now has to get that conditional use permit process. But then I think in letter B, it's, it's key to understand that if you've got an existing facility out there that was essentially grandfathered in, did not require the conditional use permit, then if that company or whoever wants to come in and expand their, their footprint, then if the area covered by the solar panels by 5% or more of the original footprint, then that's going to be subject to the conditional use permit approval process. So you're not going to be able to just go in there and, and just keep expanding. We, we need to set a, a number there that, where that triggers.
Somebody goes in and puts up 1,000 panels and next year they want to start enlarging it, so they put in another 50 panels, it's 5%. No, no, no modification. The next year they want to put in another 50 panels.
Well, that's required. That's beyond the original footprint.
Well, yeah.
Based on the 50.
Fifty a year for how long? Pretty soon they've got 2,000.
Well, the original footprint's still the 1,000, right? So once you hit 51, then you need to come back.
The original footprint would be the 1,000.
Right.
And so they're allowed 50. So now they got 1,050, but then if they want to come back and put another 100 in, you've got to go back to the original footprint, which is 1,000. So the most they'd be allowed would be that 1,050.
50 a year.
No. They'd be under the original.
I think the original footprint is still 1,000. That doesn't change.
No, it doesn't. So you've got 1,000, 5% 1,000 is 50, right? So you can put in 50 each year and not, based on that original footprint. And, you know, so, you know, four years, you've got another 200 panels and do the, do the math, they could expand that.
That's not the intent.
I know.
If you're, if you're reading it that way, though.
I'm reading that, that, that ability is there based on the way I see this thing.
It'd be a one-time 5%. So it's your.
Was it really the square feet or is it the number of panels? Because what if the size of the panels shrink over time and so I replace 100 panels with 150, but they're all in the same frame?
And that's why they say individual panels or the area covered by the panels.
So if the solar panels cover 125 acres, say that future technology, they're 50% size, you could still fill that 125 acres.
Yes. Okay. Yes. Well, I think we need to limit that, that, that addition somehow. So it's not just a forever type thing.
And, yeah, and that wasn't the intent, but if you're reading it that way, then, yeah, it needs to be corrected.
The intent was a one-time.
The intent is a one-time 5% increase. Everything after that is conditional use permit. So we'll look at that language and correct that to make it more, make it more clear than, because I didn't, my intent wasn't to interpret it the way you're interpreting it.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah. That's good you bring that up. Then number three is to just reimburse the county for any kind of unusual expenses. We had that type of situation with the wind farm where, you know, anything kind of above and beyond or extraordinary, then we would get reimbursed for that.
Vague and.
It's vague. It's vague, but.
Do you have any issue with wind company when you tried to force that?
Yeah. No, did we have an issue, did you say? No. No. No, that's, this is something that staff, staff in the company would negotiate. It doesn't involve the planning commission, but, no, we didn't have an issue with that.
All right. Any other, any other discussion on 25-105? Okay, we'll continue on to 106.
I'd like to suggest maybe for thought process is that a modern solar installation someday will include batteries. I know of a project out in Arizona that can generate 130 megawatts and they're putting in, and their PPA is only for 100 megawatts. They're going to use the extra 30 megawatts to recharge batteries and those batteries would then take them to a wider window. In other words, that number of hours you can get out of solar panels, it gets to be a, more number of hours and the objective is to get to the place that as the wind starts blowing in the evening, that wind then begins to pick up. So in other words, they, they made it a wider, you know. So maybe somewhere's in here in that 106, that I mentioned batteries in some way.
I, I agree on that. I, if you're, you're throwing batteries in the mix, then I think you've got a whole other set of issues because those are usually what the lithium ion type batteries and, you know, you have fire issues and contamination issues and everything else, you know, for storage of those things.
I'm not sure how I should be in there, but it just seems to me like we shouldn't be back here in two years from now and find out the first project includes batteries and we haven't mentioned it in any way.
Nope. Yeah, along the battery and Steve, yeah, let you know that, yeah, I've had conversations with emergency management. I think they're going to look at what they're going to want to see on, on there and as far as a situation like that with, with batteries. But as you go through the document, part of the agreements that they need to have signed is an emergency management plan approved by them. So we could hope that that type of stuff would be covered in their emergency management action plan.
Or I feel like if they're, if a, if a, if solar station's going in and their, their intent, the get-go is to, to put in battery storage.
Yeah.
Then I think we should have some type of provisions regulating the, the storage, you know, like bigger setbacks.
Storage, maintenance and disposal.
Well, disposal and you've got to have a, you know, fire suppression plan and everything else. Those things should blow up.
And that wouldn't be in the emergency management plan?
Well, it may be.
Yeah. I think that would be their expertise to determine that rather than zoning regulations, maybe.
You know, is that something that we can be guaranteed is they're going to have?
I think in, on, on paragraph two, it, it states the general site description, which includes a project introduction. I'm not going to read it all first, but it gives the plan of operation and number of panels, et cetera. Maybe that's a good place to say whether or not the store, you know, the energy storage will be used on-site. And that will be, that will be an introduction to that and maybe there needs to be something else later on in the document that we.
Five years now, the first retrofit may be to add battery storage. So it has to be mentioned here somewhere.
What I, maybe we could look at, Mark, is, you know, getting the emergency management involved in this, have them maybe come to our next meeting if, if it's possible to provide their input on this. You know, I don't know, you know, if they are, if there's anything from the health department on environmental health aspect that we need to consider.
I have kind of a general question that maybe fits in here and that is, in, in developing this, are there resources outside, I mean, I think this is a good example, engineering firms or even the industry itself that, you know, what they are seeing coming in, in the, you know, the next upgrade of their solar installations or new technology that they're waiting on? Well, I'm sure there's firms and companies out there, but, you know, I didn't go that far in, in contacting them or anything for that. Yeah.
If need be, we potentially could.
Okay, anything else in 105?
I had a, yeah, I had one note, I'm not, I'll just ask it now and this is another education thing for me. Does the, does the county ever worry about the financial, the financials of the developer, performance bonds, all those things? Where does that come into the process, I guess is my question? Is that anything we need to worry about or does that happen somewhere else?
You mean their, their ability to do, I don't, I understand.
They're going to be funding the project.
Fund the proj, no. We're, we're interested in land use, not, not a person's ability to, to do a project, anything like that. You know, we, we're looking at the project, if it's, if it's a go, then great. If they can't fund it, then that's their, their issue. As you see in the document, you'll, they'll have two years to develop the project. If they can't develop it, they can get like a one-year extension and after that, if they still can't do it, then the project's dead and they have to start all over, so.
We also require a certi bond for decommissioning or the tail end of the thing within the developer.
That's in the developer group. That's what I was wondering because, yeah.
Would that apply if a developer started a project, then didn't come out with the right funding he needed and had to abandon it with that certi bond, kick in to allow us to reclaim the, the ground?
I think that's the development agreement. That's all contained in that.
That'll all be done, the, it's just like planning a subdivision, you know, they got to give us the, the money before they can start building the subdivision. In case they default on that, then the county can use that money to go in and contract us to make the build of the road. So it's the same situation, yeah, they'll have to, they'll be that guarantee.
So that, that should, so this will all show up in section 110.
Yeah, but, yeah, we don't, I mean, we don't worry about their financial means or whatever to do something like that.
Okay, moving, moving along, do you, are we very good with, with paragraph 106?
And then the, as far as roads, that would be covered under the development agreement.
Yep.
If they go to, I was talking to somebody over the weekend and, you know, they've experienced a little bit with solar projects and they say, you want to make sure you cover all of road, roads that use for maintenance, for construction, for ongoing maintenance and make sure that they're maintained or improved because, you know, they'll tear the roads up.
Yep, it'll be, just like it was with wind. It'd be just like wind, it'd be like, yeah. Yeah, I, I didn't know if they would potentially tear up roads, but that'll be part of the, the developers' agreement with the county commissioners and so, yeah, that wouldn't be, you know, our concern as a board.
Yep.
Yep.
That would be the concern.
Exactly.
Yep. And I know he likes his roads, so he's going to protect that.
Okay, moving on to paragraph 107. Document plans, studies, reports.
I would note in number two, we're talking about the minimum requirements for notification of property owners similar to, to wind. It needs to be from the property lines where the initial use permit starts from. It's not going to be from the lease area because as you know, you could have a 40-acre parcel ground, maybe you're only going to lease 10 acres of it in the middle of that. So then your notification of 1,000 feet would just be around that lease area potentially. You know, we discussed that with wind a little bit, of the concerns about not notifying a lot of people because of, if you're just doing a lease area, you know, and you're talking about a 40, 80, 160 acre parcel, that notification area gets really small when you're just talking about 1,000 feet on such a large parcel. So same thing with, with solar, it would be from the property lines instead of from the lease area. So I think that's important. Note, do we make sure that we get more than enough people notified of, of this project?
There were, during the whole wind project discussion, I mean, we heard in, in some of the public testimony that there wasn't the, the area of, of notification wasn't big enough. Does that, does that address that?
Probably not.
No.
I think you referred to the thousands.
Yep. I'm, I'm of the mindset that, you know, statute requires, you know, 1,000 feet, that's what we should do and that we should not really treat any kind of other land use differently than what we would treat anything else because it's hard telling, you know, what's important. I mean, somebody may not care about a wind farm, somebody may not care about a solar farm, but they have a big issue with a, a recreational facility going right next to them with, with lights on till 11 o'clock at night. So it's very hard to, to determine what land uses are going to be really important to an individual property owner. So that's why you're, you're safer if you just stick with the statutory requirement. If we wanted to do something different and make it a half a mile, for example, like other counties, I think have a half a mile, I believe McPherson may still be that way, for example, then we need to do it for everybody. That way it keeps an even playing field for everybody. You know, we'll send it to us for a half a mile for the recreational facility, for the shed building company or whatever. And then if the people don't care, they don't care, you know. But keep it consistent instead of trying to individualize, say, well.
Two separate conversations.
Yeah, I mean, to me, you can't say that, you know, a solar farm or a wind farm is very important to notify all these people more so than any other type of conditional use permit.
In reality, if you get a, a major development such as a wind farm or a large solar farm going in, word of mouth is going.
You're going to know about it. I would learn about it.
Yes.
You may not know about the, you know, shed building company or whatever if you're outside that 1,000-foot notification area, but something like this, you're going to know. I mean, I find it hard to believe that a person wouldn't, but.
We still got thrown into the hash a little bit for not notifying.
Right.
And I'm just, I'm just, just trying to make sure that we, we have something that going by, going by the, the property line rather than the project line is going to help out that, I mean, it, it, it does expand it to, to a point and I think that's going to help out.
If we went by the lease area with a project like this or even a wind farm or any other type of controversial project, you know, our, our rock quarry, you know, if they were only going to lease, you know.
A corner of the property.
Yeah. I mean, when we do notify a, a half of the people that you would notify versus going to the property line.
When we did the wind farm, we used the property boundaries for notification, as we did. That's still complex.
Yes. Even though we would have had to if they would have provided legal descriptions for all of the lease areas, which is like an acre or less.
I understand your point, Mark. You know, I mean, the only way you could expand it or than this would be to make a separate notification for wind and, and solar versus, you know, everything else.
I understand your concern too with that. I, I get it, you know, from a personal, yeah, I, I get it, but I think to be consistent and not try and treat a land use different.
That's the thing, I mean, I mean, I know consistency is, is the easiest route, but what would be involved in setting up a second notification class? in setting up a second notification class, if you will, for wind and solar?
I mean, it'd be a text amendment, we'd have to do a text amendment, the regulations.
County, the county attorney, when we were doing the wind stuff, rings in my ears, just make sure it's fair for everybody. So, we don't want to single anybody out, so I think what Mark has done, and going by the statutes, that's state statute, so let's just, I, I think we just, my question was more so that whether or not that, what we're doing is any different than what we did for anything else, and it isn't.
Well, I understand that one too, and I can definitely see that if we do make an exception for wind and solar, that, you know, somebody else is going to raise hell because, you know, we didn't do it for this project or that project, we only have 1,000.
Junkyard or rock quarry or.
Something, yeah.
Yep.
I'll just, yeah, just leave it 1,000.
What I thought was wrong, I discussed it with Mark, with the wind, is I thought when that 1,000-foot of where a cell was going to go was not good. I thought everybody needed to be notified within 1,000 foot outside of the project, because you could actually own a house in the middle of the project and be further than 1,000 foot away from any wind, and I thought that was a bad deal. So, but solar's a lot different than wind, because you're not going to have this big massive thing with wind cells far apart or solar panels far apart, but in that, in the wind, I always thought it should have been 1,000 foot outside of the entire project, that way everybody inside of it, even, no matter how far away you are from a wind cell, is notified. I don't know if we ever changed that or not, but we have some pretty good discussions.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense on that.
Because I, that, I think it even existed.
Those cover a lot of ground.
Yeah, so outside, 1,000 foot outside of a wind project is probably who, all should have been notified.
Well, we're doing text amendments on solar, maybe we can sneak something in there on this, on the wind notification thing, like Don's suggesting.
I'm going to go back and look at it and see exactly what we did.
We was gonna.
I thought we were.
We was gonna talk about changing that, and I don't know if we ever got there.
I don't think we brought it up, though.
I don't, I don't think so, because we discuss a lot of this.
Why don't you work up some wording on that?
I'll do that.
I'll do that.
In your spare time, right?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Do we have a light schedule anymore?
Oh, my God.
Sure.
The rest of this, I mean, I've recognized this from Wind, you know, the Wildlife and Parks is involved, make sure they're involved with it. Environment, you talked about a third-party company, now is that, is that where we were talking about expenses being paid by the developer or by the applicant, that hiring that third-party to?
Under what?
It's on, it's on paragraph four, reports shall be conducted by a qualified third-party about existing environmental concerns.
No, that's on them, that's not something.
That's all on them.
That's all, that's a report that they need to submit, no, that's not something that we're hiring.
They're already, they're already.
When I'm talking about expenses, you know, if we have to go to a different venue, you know, or hold multiple, you know, meetings for the public hearing, that type of stuff.
I got you.
Or we have to, you know, hire AD equipment, that type of thing is what we're talking about there mainly.
I assume Don is okay with five there, with the one-mile deal on an airport?
I think it's safer with the panels than it would, yeah.
Okay, well, you need glare, you know.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, don't know those issues yet, that's, we're just getting into that, because I, even when we talk about that, I don't know what the glare is on these. I don't, I don't, I mean, if there's a glare, how many miles do you have to be away, I don't know.
How different, how different is that to a flash you get when you get in line with the sun over a body of water? You know, it's, there's a lot of similarities there that I could see.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think they're safe as far as landing and taking off, as far as glare, I have no idea. So, I guess we'll probably be able to read that someplace.
Well, you say there is a.
Or we're going to hear about it.
Now, there is a glare hazard analysis report in section six, right?
Yep.
Solar glare aviation hazard, yeah, okay, that covers.
So that, yeah.
So that should cover.
Any other comments on 107?
Just a minute.
Coming back to airports, is the one-mile, is that an FAA guideline?
No, FAA's less than that.
Is it, okay.
That was taken from, like you said, other, other state regs that I saw, they seem to be pretty consistent, I thought, with that, so, without, in my efforts to get this to you so we can discuss it, you know, I had put a lot of research into that, but that seemed to be pretty consistent with all the publications that I had.
Maybe when you're at a normal airport, you know, I mean, you know, not normally more than a mile out on down leg, down wing, landing, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, 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 it seemed reasonable, I just didn't know if there was a history as to where it came from or.
On item three there, where the 20 feet comes in, maximum height through the solar panel of 20 feet, was there some basis to that, is that after somebody else's standards or?
Oh, your way over on height?
Yeah. Are we ready to go to 108?
Oh, I thought we already, I thought we was already there.
The setbacks, is that, how did you come up with the setbacks?
Counties are all over the board, I think, with setbacks. My reason for saying 50 feet from property lines and stuff is, is based off of our agricultural zoning district current setback regulation for buildings, which is 50 feet from the right-of-way, it's 30 feet from side property lines, and so, you know, my, my thinking on it was that, well, if we're going to, you know, permit a house at 50 foot from a road right-of-way, and other buildings for that matter, it could be a big machinery shed for ag structures, then why, why would we want to have a greater setback for solar panels, so.
Yeah, I could see it as similar to a building.
That was my, that's.
That's the only reason I ask.
That's the simple reason, that's just what I, I based on. Some, some people were 30 feet, some were 60, I believe, some were maybe, you know, 100 feet, some were like 30 feet, so I'd say, that's the reason I based off of that.
Would that be a consideration going back to Harley's battery question? If there's onsite battery storage, does it require a bigger setback or?
Potentially, but I, you know, I think with, if they're going to show where the batteries are on, on their site plan, then I think, you know, you would have the ability under the conditional use permit process to require something greater than that, but, you know, I could certainly look at something like that, you know, for, for batteries, I don't know what that would be right now.
From what my knowledge is, I don't see any difference. The setback wouldn't be changed just because you have batteries.
Just because of batteries.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a battery storage facility 50 feet to 100 feet from my house, you know, which is what this would permit.
Maybe that would be written into the batteries piece of the puzzle and not the general project. I don't know.
I guess, you know, is everybody happy with the 50-foot issue, or do we need to look at making that a little bit larger, like 75 feet?
Well, never be 50 foot from your house, because your house.
50 from the prop, road right-of-way.
50 from the property line.
From the property line.
100 from the house.
Yeah. But, you know, I just, I was looking at the adjacent, you know, the adjacent property owners and what they're going to be looking at.
To me, 25 foot wouldn't be that big a deal, you're going to see it at 50, just like you're going to see it at 75 or 100 or 150 too.
150, 150's good, Mark. One of the, one of the.
You know, I mean, I like setbacks.
It's going to happen, huh?
One of the challenges we had when we did the commercial wind was the property line versus primary residence. We landed on primary residence. Is there a need to revisit or re-discuss that thought process?
Is, is that worth 100 feet from a non-participating landowner's principal building? Is that considered the house or your main office?
Yeah, if it's, if, let's just say it's a, you know, you got your farm, your main farm headquarters, and you don't have a residence there, but you have a primary building.
Main building.
Yeah, that would be, that's what that included.
But, what is, currently, what's the setback for buildings?
In the A, it's 50 from the right-of-way and 30 from all other property lines. In residential, which is anything less than 40 acres, it's going to more than likely be 30 feet from the right-of-way, that's a given, but the setbacks vary, depending on the other zoning district, if you look at the R1, 10-foot, 10-foot from your side and 20-foot from the back.
So what you're saying, there's a basis of the 50 feet?
Yeah, the basis was off of, if we, if we're going to allow a house or a big ag machinery shed to be 50 feet from the right-of-way, that could be 100 by 200-foot machinery shed, then why would we have a solar panel greater?
Yeah, and this is, and this states 50 feet no matter what, from all property lines, all of that, that makes sense, perfect sense.
So I, I think, you know, we do need to kind of revisit the battery storage, make, you know, have.
You have a little.
I got a note.
Greater setback.
I've got a note for that.
I think three miles would be better.
That works, that works good for me, yeah, okay.
Those things catch on fire. They burn for days and days and days.
Harley, you were talking about height.
Yeah, the, the item three, I'm just curious where the 20 feet come from.
Again, research, other counties, publications, stuff like that, height was really another one that was all over the board. Our agricultural district does not have a height limitation, so, you know, if you want to build a 50-foot-tall building, you can certainly do that. The residential zoning districts do have a height limitation, you know, we've got parcels that could be 35 acres and zone residential, even though it may be cropland or pastureland, and so that has a 35-foot height limitation. So, the 20-foot, quite honestly, there's no scientific, you know, research in it, I can tell you some of the heights I saw were 30, 35 feet, other ones I saw were 15 feet. I thought 15 feet might be a little, little low, and so, avoid, to avoid an issue of variances or waivers, you know, things like that that we've had in our regulations, I landed on 20.
I like 20.
Some of these numbers we put in there, we just had to put in a number, and then for you guys to agree or change.
Well, I understand where you're coming up with 25, my question is, okay, say somebody wants to come in and put in a high-end solar system, you know, tracking-type things and whatnot, they're mounted, you know, is it 20 feet high enough or something like that?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
We have no industry information, that's what I'm saying, and we're just basing this on it.
What was there, though, the Midora and Huntsville project, so that was before I was on the board, how tall are those?
I'd have to go back and look, I don't know if they actually said, I'd have to go back and look at the file and see.
I'm trying to mentally, they're taller than me, I know that, but that's not all that high. Yeah, that's a pretty low bar.
They're taller than Harley, probably, so that's getting up there, so.
Is there any noise put off by solar?
There ain't.
Noise?
No, not from my knowledge.
None at all?
Not from what I read.
Humming or anything?
The one in Huntsville has a very small amount of humming, if you're on a bicycle and you bicycle right up to the gate, and it's a really quiet night, and you lean up against the gate really hard. I would say it's about the same as my first.
Nothing that should be considered, like annoying or detrimental to the area or anything like that, I mean, like Alan said, you might have a faint hum or so, but nothing, what I would consider to be severe, I mean, publications I've read said no.
I had to try really hard to hear it, but I can't hear that good either, so.
So you know there are no health issues emulating solar farm?
No health issues, nope.
That we know of.
Not that I've heard yet.
My publication I read, they'll come.
Except in California.
And we all will.
Yeah, but like Don said, you know, some of these numbers, I, we just put a number in based off of my research here, and you guys need to see where you guys land, and it could certainly be 35 feet, you know, to take into consideration future technology changes, or it can, you know.
But if it's 20 feet now, and somebody makes the application and they, they say, well, our most efficient panel is 21 feet, there's a method of getting an exception for that, isn't there?
Not what Mark said earlier, he said that we can't waive.
You can't waive it, no. It'd be 20 foot, so.
So, so there's not an opportunity for variance because of the earlier.
Have to change regulations.
Have to change, yeah, do a text amendment, so that change your thought process, maybe.
We need to, you know, try to obtain some industry information.
See, that's where.
Is 20 feet tall enough, you know?
See, if you go back to the regs.
Friend over there in Yoder that, you know, wants to put in the coffee shop, he sells solar systems, you know, we can talk to him. I don't know what kind of system he's primarily, commercial farm stuff, I think.
Right.
Probably not, not this big stuff.
Not this big stuff, no. But he might have some information on that.
20 feet's too short for a building.
Yeah.
But it's a force.
A solar.
Well, but then the next paragraph is, all other buildings comply with that height restriction.
Yeah, it says all other buildings.
Yeah, that's.
The height restriction under article 13 is 35 feet or no height restriction, so it's not, it's not saying.
Okay, I got you, okay.
Okay.
All right.
That's fine.
Did that read right, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not saying comply with the 20 feet, it's saying shall comply with article 13, which is where we have the 35-foot.
Okay.
So it looks like on height, we have a little more homework?
Yeah, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Make sure that's.
We're not going to solve it tonight.
Mark's going to come back next month with all the answers.
Get out on your bike and ride up there and clap your hands.
I'll get a, I'll get a tape measure, who's going to bail me out when I fall into the sand?
Bail you out or bury you. If we thought you guys could solve this tonight, we wouldn't put a nine-month moratorium on that.
We appreciate that. Fencing, fencing, I would anticipate chain link is what most people are going to do because it's the most economical, typically if you're going to put, you know, some razor wire on the top, you know.
Could be, but it doesn't have to be a well-known commercial solar facility to make application, you know, it could be somebody new, and so the fencing, you know, and you know, why I have it so detailed is that you don't want a bunch of car hoods being your fence, you know, you don't want, you know, metal off of old, old sheds being your fence, you want something that's a little fence-like, industry-standard material, and so.
Yeah, I mean, you get it in like chain link, that's not going to screen anything.
Yeah, right.
Keeps people out, is all.
Yeah, and that's what the intent of that is, to aid in the, in the keeping of people out.
And that, that then goes over to, okay, if it doesn't block, visually block the solar panels, then you've got to ensure that there's adequate maintenance of those grounds, so they just don't look in and see these solar panels with all these weeds growing and.
Provisions in there later on, right? For maintenance of noxious weeds and other, other things.
Well, noxious weeds is a different class, Kate, than just weeds, right, Don?
Yeah, there is. Yeah, there's a lot of weeds that aren't noxious weeds.
Yes, tell me about it.
Lighting?
Something, it's pretty straightforward from what we've done with other, other businesses. Something, it's pretty straightforward from what we've done with other, other businesses that have come looking for.
Twenty-foot light pole high enough? Matches the, well, I don't think you wanna have something that's, you know, fifty or seventy-five foot in the air, and I don't know, you know. I don't think you wanna have the whole thing lit up at night, and I don't know if they're used that often, but they might have light poles for buildings potentially.
You look at substations that are lit up, they don't have tall, tall towers, they're all perimeter right around, right around the fence shining towards the inside.
Yep.
You look at your, your yard lights, they're like light on telephone pole, they're probably twenty, twenty-five feet up.
It's tall enough I don't wanna get on a ladder anymore.
Yeah, I don't go up there, call the electrician with a bucket truck.
There you go.
So when you go back to C, can I ask you a question? So you're saying that if it's a chain link fence, it's gotta be an eight-foot chain link fence? And if a solar panel's around a hundred acres, is that, is that what you're saying, the whole eight-foot's chain link, is that what you're saying?
The whole, the whole, the perimeter of it should have, should have that eight-foot chain link fence, yes. I would, I would think that developer would want that kind of security on their investment.
I'm just asking.
That probably.
I guess, I don't like this word new lumber. New lumber doesn't stay new for long. Stays new for a long time.
Versus usual.
I'm not even sure I like the word vinyl in there, I think it ought to be just chain link. For security reasons.
You could, you're all right, let's just, for argument's sake, Harley, let's take out the, the words new lumber and new vinyl, and say the fence shall be constructed of new chain link or other material reviewed by the planning commission.
And that's what I was getting at, are you wanting chain link, 'cause it's not saying chain link. And how you're saying chain link.
It gave.
It says new chain link in there, you know.
Or other material. That gives, that gives us some opportunity to say, you know what, if you wanna dress it up on the, on the, on the street facing, and put a cedar fence along the, along the, 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 the street facing of the product, of the project, we'd okay that, but it needs to be a minimum of.
Guarantee it, they probably won't cost that.
I, I get it.
Maintenance standpoint, wind that blows in Kansas.
It gives them the opportunity to, for some flexibility to bring an oper, bring an option to us if they.
Yeah, we'll trouble keeping a six-foot. See, your fence is upright, much less an eight-foot one.
Am I scratching that then?
I'd scratch, new lumber and new vinyl. And then leave the, leave the term, leave the verbiage in there, or other material reviewed by the.
New chain link or other material, yeah. Well, if I'm a neighbor and I'd rather look at a wood fence or a vinyl fence.
That would be the other material.
Then, then it would be your, your prerogative to come to the public.
So other material could.
Let us hear what you're.
Yeah, it could be lumber.
Other material includes that.
Yep. The earth and berm piece kind of intrigues me, Mark, tell me a little bit about the history of where you came up with the earth and berm.
Saw it in some, some regulations where, you know, if they want to build a berm that would help, shield, screen the panels, then they could do that, and if they would do something of that nature, then maybe we could give them a, a break along the setback line, 'cause the thinking is that you as an adjacent property owner won't necessarily see those because the berm is gonna be at least six-foot tall. And so if you wanna do a situation like an earth and berm, you know, if they're, if they're scraping the land, then we could give them a, a setback break.
The berm would go between the fencing and the property line.
Yes, yes.
Okay, just kinda, just kinda curious.
Yeah, I saw that a few places and.
You've got that in there optional, it could say maybe.
Yeah.
And if they feel like it would be warranted in a certain area, then sure.
Let them knock themselves out.
But, you know, there's road, road intersection concerns, and so that's why you would have to review that, make sure that they're not building it in a site triangle, that type of stuff, and it's safe. There's also floodplain concerns with doing something like that too, so.
It's all, well, it pulls drainage and all that in.
It may not be feasible, you know, incidentally, but it is an option.
I'm just kinda curious.
Smaller ones, yeah. You gotta, because, you know, you know, we're not necessarily talking, you know, three thousand, five thousand acre farm, you know, we're talking something like what our valley did, which is seven acres. And so maybe something like this would be, you know, feasible for them to do or so, you know. So that's where you gotta think along those lines as well.
Paragraph six, communication lines. Kind of lumped six and seven together.
Communication lines underground, when, when feasible, gives them the option to not put them underground if there's something that poses, you know, and not do hardship, if you will, and it's listed in specifics there.
And, yeah, in the paragraph numbers, the letter of six, you say communication lines, but then in paragraph A, you say communication and distribution. Should that be communication and distribution at letter six, or number six?
Yep.
Signage, I know we, we, we worked with the wind guys to make sure everything was marked and placarded with everything that they, that needed to be. And I think as we look at the, here, here's, here's where the batteries come into play again, that if they, if there is hazardous, hazardous materials on site, there needs to be some sort of.
That'd be regulated.
Yeah, would that be regulated, so we wouldn't need to put that in our.
Yeah, I would say it'd be, point of this is, yeah, you're not gonna be able to do other advertising on the farm, you know, kind of like we, I was, we, not to say that that's gonna happen, but you, you never know. So you can't do other signs and billboards out there along with, with that.
Okay, any, any other questions on six or seven? About number, number eight?
Question there on, you know, paragraph A. Are there instances where solar systems interfere?
Um, I don't know, that's a carryover from wind, potentially not, but.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious.
I haven't heard, I don't know.
Heat, you know.
Yeah. But I think something in there, if it does, then, you know, it would be covered. I have not heard of instances, but that's like strictly a carryover from wind, and probably worthy of further research. And get into the soil erosion sentiment, stormwater runoff and wetlands, so they gotta develop a plan, again, maybe not an issue, maybe an issue in certain instances, but it's in there to cover us in case there is something that we need to, to have in there as far as stormwater management goes.
Is that where we talked about, like, is there another section for, you know, overgrown weeds and stuff like that, where it's not necessarily related to stormwater? But is that covered for?
I don't believe I did anything with, with weeds or requiring it, I mean, I, I wasn't sure. It, it comes down to an enforcement issue, you know, I know there's some discussion on having the availability of the, of the owner of the land to be able to have animals graze underneath or in between the, the panels, and you know, that's been, that's been a discussion topic. I didn't put anything in there, again, I feel, I feel like that's part of the, the lease agreement between that, that property owner and the company, to, if he wants to have grasses underneath or so he can have animals grazed, I, I don't know how, you know, how the county would be enforcing something like that, I mean, that's pretty, pretty detail-oriented.
I haven't even heard of instances where they did a little like micro-farming between the rows of panels and whatnot.
And I think it's a great idea, but I think it's something that is gonna be very hard to monitor and, and enforce. I think it's better covered under a, a lease agreement between that property owner and the company instead of having the county force it.
I, I don't know about, necessarily agree with that, Mark, because if they just, if they let the weeds grow wild in, in the ground in there, then that affects all the adjoining property owners, you have to look at the stupid.
Well, I think weeds would be a different subject, I think, you know, maybe do something like that potentially.
Yeah, how do we get into the nuisance business?
Yeah.
It's a slippery slope.
It is.
It is, but this kind of development provides that opportunity where it wouldn't be if it was, you know, a farm field or a pasture.
Well, how about the water, the runoff, like for, say, chitty watershed areas? Will they have any say, or how do we do that? Like, say if there's batteries stored there, if there's anything that would flow out and possibly pollute, you know, like the water downstream, or is there anything like that?
Containment regulations, that kind of thing.
Or you do on oil wells, burning around them and whatnot.
Yeah.
And I think that's under the county regs, it'd be more state or federal rigs and stuff like that. But, you know, like, you know, talking about the weeds, again, you know, that's, that's kind of a nuisance thing, we don't go after, we don't go after tall weeds and grass right now, so if your neighbor doesn't mow his yard, oh, well. That's why, you know, we don't have those types of regulations, 'cause we don't have nuisance codes, and so, you know, does this type of project fit under that? Do we wanna extend our regulations more so? 'Cause we don't do that now in any, any development, anything we do, we don't care that the grass is mowed or not, we don't care if there's weeds or not. Noxious weeds is a different story, of course, but, you know, so that's kind of where I was going with, I mean, I, I get it, I think, yeah, it'd be nice if you'd have grasses planted so they could graze animals, but if that's getting into, you know, really overreaching and trying to monitor this like every month or every, every couple of months, you know, drive around, make sure that there's no weeds growing.
I really doubt, doubt if, you know, in Kansas at least, if they're gonna have any animals grazing.
Yeah.
On a solar farm, risking, you know, the animals, you know, damaging the equipment.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
They don't lose, you know, they'll, they'll fix it real quick.
Yeah. Well, and kind of, I was just thinking more along the lines of scale, you know, like you got a neighbor with an acre and he doesn't mow, well, you know, kind of annoying, but that's it. But if you have a section or two sections that are harboring, you know, millions of weeds, you know, if you're trying to farm downland, that, that creates an economic problem. If you've got a seed bank of two sections directly downwind from you and you can't do anything about it.
How, how has, how has the Huntsville?
That's a good question.
How has the Huntsville station controlled it up to this point?
Well, it hasn't rained since they put it in, so.
That's probably the only one that really has some age in this area.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the South Hutch one, I guess.
There's the South Hutch, I think a lot of that one is crushed rock and, so if it rains next week, I'll report back.
Yeah, I, I drove by the, a couple of days ago, there's one, there's one by Liberty over there, close to South Hutch, and, you know, you can't see through the fence unless you walk, curb up to the fence and, and kind of peek between the deals, you can't see anything.
Is that a wooden fence or what?
No, it's chain link with, with.
Oh, vinyl slats.
Slats in it.
Slats in it. And, and there's, and it's all rock in there, and they're all variable so that they, they do their best job of pointing at the sun all the time. And I'm sure any commercial facility they put in will be that type, it won't be fixed.
How tall did you estimate those panels to be?
Oh, you, you couldn't see them over the top of the fence, so the fence was eight feet plus barbed wire, and you couldn't see that he had to, I had to get up, drive in the driveway, get out of my car, and go look between the, the two gates that come there, had a little space in there with a padlock on it, so I went curb up, looked through there, that's how, only way I could see anything.
Next thing, taking horse crate with you. Well, they don't make those out of wood anymore, do they?
Something you have in, in paragraph nine, letter I, is protecting exposed soil. So, you know, there, there, that's, that's a broad statement, but you could put, you could maybe put something there that said, okay, the protection of exposed soil means controlling of vegetation and/or installing an aggregate of some sort. I don't know.
Again, that's a kind of a carryover again, you know, from where you don't know if they need to grade the site or what have you, you know, I think you're looking at, you know, sill fence, but it, it's something, you know, when you talk about this, the applicant will discuss it in their, in their report. So they may say, okay, well, you know, we're not gonna have any, any situation with exposed soil, and then that, that solves that issue, same thing with.
Exactly to your point, 'cause they, the, the driveways to the wind tires in that proposed project that we heard, they, they weren't going in there with just mud roads, they were going in there developing drainage, drainage, drainage systems and putting rock down, so. Okay, you, you assume and it comes back and bites you, but you would hope that the, that any project developer of this, of a, of a commercial stature would have, have a plan much like the one in South Hutch, much like.
Well, that's how they would come out during the CUP process, that we could say, well, gee, you know, we gotta, gotta do something to maintain, you're not gonna put any gravel down, then you gotta do something to maintain the.
So that could be a condition that comes up.
Tail end.
He's like, oh, we're not doing anything, and then you view the board and us a staff and saying, no, you're gonna do this. So it's just stuff that they need to talk about in their application, whether they want to implement anything or not, it is their choice. Whether you want to require it would be your choice at that point.
Gotcha.
Now, do we have anything in the?
On this, on the subject of maintenance, this is another general question, what if the, what if their fence blows down, or, what enforcement takes place in maintenance kinds of issues, is there any enforcement?
Do we care, covering the, in the conditions of approval, with the conditional use permit, that, you know, the fence needs to be maintained, you know, at all times, and if it's not, then we would have the right to go before the commissioners and have the conditional use permit rescinded, and then they'd be done.
Kind of faultages they got running around in there, though, they're not gonna want that fence down very long.
Yeah, so it'd be enforced through, through contact with me and stuff and see what's going on, but, yeah, we could take it to that degree if we needed to.
Okay, paragraph thirteen, hazard, hazard areas, do you wanna, I think you've touched on it, kind of little bits and pieces throughout, about flood zones and that kind of thing.
Any development, the floodplain's gonna require a floodplain permit from me and/or the state, and so basically, you, you as a board, you need to be assured that, yeah, that they'll be working for me, you know, and that could be a road, that could be panels, you know, it can be filter, it could be anything, any kind of man-made change to floodplain needs permits, and so they would be working through me strictly with that.
Any comments there? Moving on to paragraph one oh nine. A lot of that, to me, from what I, what I read through it, that's, it's pretty standard conditional use permit stuff, I mean, it, you've got two years. You know, we, we put a time limit on building a building for, for a lot of it, so there's, you know, they, they, it gives, it gives the developer a timeline in which to work, and what's gonna happen during, within that timeline. County commissioners approve, approve it, then it goes to a resolution, and then for, it, it gives all the, it even, it even outlines the develop, the development agreement.
So this, from one oh nine, yeah, one oh nine on is like beyond your scope. You know, now we have an approval, and so now that's when it kind of reverts to staff and the county commissioners, and then the developers' agreements. So, yeah, so they would have, construction shop commands within two years of the approved conditional use permit, and then we define what the approved effective date would be, and that's the resolution approving the same and publish. effective date would be. And that's the resolution approving the same and publish in the official newspaper or other such requirement. And so, you know, maybe in the future, you don't have to publish in the paper. Maybe it's put it on the website, whatever that may be. So they would have two years to start after that date. If for some reason they don't start, then they would have to request permission for an extension through the county commissioners, not through this board. But it goes through the county commissioners. And then they would have to explain why they can't begin construction within that two-year period. Commissioners can grant a, a one-year extension period based off of their, their reasons why they can't start. And then if they don't do it after that one-year extension, then essentially the project is done and they have to go back through the whole process once again.
And Don, do you on 110, maybe I'm jumping ahead, on 110. Are you happy with the provisions in there? Does it relate to roads and their responsibility to repair any damages incurred during construction or maintenance because, you know, the, their equipment, the size, equipment they're using if they tear up the roads?
Yeah, all this, all this will be in the developers' agreement, which I would be a part of. And, yes. And, and so any of this stuff that's going to be in the developers' agreement, which you will not enforce, but, and so they, the staff and county commissioner will develop that. But you need to put in whatever ideas or subject that you want them to consider in the development agreement. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, and all this is may consider. So, you know, they don't have to consider a road agreement if they don't want to. It's their prerogative to do that. All these are suggested topics. And so as you read through this.
Budget repairing roads that the solar farm tears up either.
Exactly.
You got to make bridges to fix.
Yeah, I, I would be the one that would be protecting the town. Be speaking and for the townships to.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So if there are other concepts or ideas that you think should be considered for inclusion in the developers' agreement, then you would just give me those and we could potentially include those, you know, in there. But these are just suggested topics, again, somewhere to win and everything. But commissioners have the option to require it or not require it. That's their prerogative at that point in time. You see in there, things are like reseeding of disturbed areas. So that might be something to consider for the cover underneath the, the solar panels, whether it be rock or grasses or what have you. The controlling of weeds, you know, that could potentially be included in that developers' agreement that way instead of through the conditional use permit process.
On the decommissioning agreement, number two, is, is there any kind of, like, financial guarantee that, that, that that'll actually follow through at the end of the life? Is that something that has come up during other projects?
Financial guarantee, I guess.
Surety bond.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so there's a surety bond, and there'll have to be a determined amount between the staff and them.
I was going to say, was that mentioned in there or is that just assumed?
I didn't see it.
That would be part of the development agreement. Yes. And then there'd be a surety.
There's an indemnification agreement. So that's going to be a piece of that, will that be?
Underneath letter J, Alan, where it talks about, every five years, the, the decommission agreement will be reviewed for such possible increases in the decommission surety.
So it mentions, so it mentions reviewing it there?
Yes.
Okay.
Where are you at?
Below.
It doesn't necessarily have to be limited to that. It could be another form of, of guarantee, if you will.
Well, I was going to say, because it's a very detailed.
Right.
Decommissioning agreement. But if, you know, on year 29, they file bankruptcy and walk away.
We'll still have the money.
Surety. For five years to be looked at to see if it needs to be increased.
Right, right. I just, I didn't see the surety part. That was an oversight on my part.
And it's transferable to each, each consecutive owner.
But that's the only place I see the word surety brought up.
Well, in, in the developers', you know, it could be another form of guarantee as well. It doesn't have to be just limited to, to that. But that'll be in, that'll be in there. It may not be written, but it'll be in, in that agreement, though. Yeah, we're going to have the money.
Something we could put in here that we would recommend be included in that development agreement somehow. Can we insert that? I would, I would feel more comfortable.
Maybe just insert it like a section, subsection K under.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
A surety or other kind of financial guarantee.
Is there a trigger anywhere that kicks off the decommissioning process? Let's say they just, they just shut the thing down and maybe there's commotion within the company and, I mean, there's all sorts of scenarios where this would be a non, non-generating project. How long, how long of a period can elapse before the county would say, well, we want this thing, we want to take it back to farm ground?
That'd be, my thinking was that'd be the details of the developers' agreement. So it's going to be whatever the county commissioner at that time feels is adequate time of lapse, whether it's, you know, two months without generating any power, six months, a year, two years. I think those are the specifics that would be included in there.
And that very well needs to be added into this for that discussion.
Yeah.
Because there needs to be a time.
I mean, we can certainly add that as a specific topic for them to look at if you'd like.
So there, are there, are you looking at what constitutes decommissioning?
Or what, what triggers the decommissioning?
What triggers it?
Yep. Lack of production for.
How do you find out if commission?
Yeah.
But how do you know that's out of commission? You're going to see solar panels out there. You don't know whether they're generating electricity or not.
Alan, could you go by and see if it's humming?
Plug something in somewhere.
Yeah, I'm going to plug my phone.
Close with a compass and see.
We would have a little bit of a report showing the amount of energy being generated or anything. So, I mean, think it's at idle for years and we would never know it.
Well, if all the solar panels are pointing down.
Yeah, that would be a key, you know.
General lack of maintenance.
I think, I think that's general lack of maintenance or appearance. But that requires, somebody'd ride their bicycle out there once in a while, look at it.
We know it's higher than the panel.
I defer to Mark. He's the expert enforcer.
Maybe it just needs to be written in there that if the, if the developer decides that it becomes non-productive, that he, that, that triggers, that particular decision from the developer triggers some sort of communication to Mark or commissioners or somebody that says this, this is, we're done here and we're moving on.
In the meantime, they'll continue to pay property tax.
That's true. You could require some kind of a notification upon cessation of, of operations.
But, yeah, that's something that they'll have, commissioners have to figure out.
Which is something we could put in the, things to think about in your development agreement. Because, you know, there's seven of us. There's only five of them.
Right. I'm going to flip the page over. There's still a little bit more continuing with that, with that paragraph. Items five through eight.
It kind of refers to your fire and, and rescue plan where I think, you know, they will have to submit something reviewed by emergency management, staff and director. And I think that would satisfy some of the concerns with battery storage right in that agreement right there, rather than trying to regulate it all through the conditional use permit process.
Paragraphs 111. I had a question on seven. Is the PPA, is that a standard industry document or?
PPA stands for purchase power agreement.
So is there, are there any, anything that we would want to see specifically in that? Or it's just a?
See, I, I think, again, we're looking at land use. And, and a lot of the places that I saw wanted it before or are at the conditional use permit application. Here, it's at the end. I, I take it the position that, you know, I don't, I don't care. I don't need to see it right now. Eventually, you need to have it. But again, we're looking at land use. And so if they want to proceed forward with something and then come up with the agreement later, to me, that's, that's acceptable. I don't think we need to have it during the conditional use permit process.
We don't really care so much about the content of the agreement?
No.
My, our, we don't care about that.
No, no. It's something between the, the buyer and the seller.
They're a builder. They, they surely have already sold it.
Right. So that's why I don't, I don't see the need to have it, you know, during the conditional use permit or before the application. A lot of people will do that and require that. And I don't see the need for that.
So it just verifies the viability of the project somehow? Or, I mean, why do, why do we want it?
Well, they want to know where, you know, if, if they're producing the power, where it's, if there's a buyer for that power. We're not just building, we're not going to, we're not going to build all the infrastructure out there and then just have it sit out there not doing anything for a year or two, waiting for them to find a, a person to buy the power. You know, you want to, you want to know that after they get the conditional use permit approved, now they know they can have a project. So now they can start going out there and trying to sell that. But, you know, we, we don't want to have the thing all built out there and then go ahead and try and find a buyer for that power, which could be, you know, who knows, two, five, seven years down the road.
Well, it couldn't be that because the other thing that where it's not operating so long, then it's going to be decommissioned.
Right.
At whatever timeline we come up with, yeah.
So that kind of helps out a little bit.
It's like a wind farm, you know, they had that, you know, that power sold before they even, you know, before they were still thinking about it.
Usually, they'll probably have it before.
It's just to verify intent more than anything. Make sure that the guy doing it has got his, all his work for water.
Any solved, any unsolved problems will get solved here.
We're on the last page.
We'll live and take her to the, to the posse.
All right. See you next month, all right? Okay. Paragraphs 111 and 112, I'm going to kind of lump those together. They just kind of overlay what the requirements of the zoning permit are. And the construction, construction requirements, it's just, it's pretty simple. Conforming to engineering, engineering documents, we retain the right to, to hire our own structural engineer to, to review what they're doing and only to disturb the site that they're going to be working on. It's, I kind of gave it a thumbnail sketch there, but that's probably a little bit more detailed. There's a lot more detail within it. However, that's.
I had a couple there on, on 25, 112 and then number six, where I was talking about the applicant, the construction company. So distributor clear a site only to the extent necessary. About halfway through, I'm going to take out the word affected, where it says without approval of the affected landowner. I think it just needs to be landowner. I don't know. This is kind of an extra word in there. I don't think it needs to be in there. Then on cleanup, under number seven, I've got two periods. So I'll take out that other period right there. But.
I thought you were trying to end the whole thing right there.
I'd like to, yeah. And the question, I, I think I had second thoughts right now on the operation and maintenance. Over under letter A, where it says, operation and maintenance requirements, including the frequency of maintenance activities for the panels and the transmission lines. I don't know if I care about that. Second thought, do I care? I don't, I don't, do you care about, about filing that information with me? I don't think I care how, how frequently they.
The only thing, the only, only reason you would want to know that is to where you could kind of get a panel on how much traffic was going to be in and out of a project. But really, you're going to, you're going to, you're, this is all going to come to light in your development agreement on how much, well, how much road use are you going to use?
And even that, it's like, I don't, second thought after that, you know, I don't, I don't know if I, I need to know that. I don't think it needs to be in there.
I think maybe the emergency management, paragraph would be interested in how this thing operates and, you know, where's the, where's the off switch or?
Well, that, that would be covered through the emergency management.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be in the point.
I don't think Mark needs to know where the off switch is.
Made through.
Good thought, Garth, yeah. I didn't think about that. I, I try to think, why, why did I put that in there? And I honestly can't remember why I put that in there.
I don't, I agree. I don't think that's needed. Let's delete it.
Now, like the next one, the, you know, the width of the transmission lines and easements and that kind of stuff, that is important for the fact that, you know, we're not going to be leasing probably a whole 40, 160 acre piece of ground. So I'm going to need to know where our transmission line easement is so that if that property owner wants to build a machine shed or a house or anything like that, I need to know where those easements are so I don't issue a permit across, you know, that easement. So that, that's the, I understand that one. The first one, I didn't.
The last item in that paragraph is transfer of ownership.
Pretty much it says that the new owner of that project will have to abide by all the rules and regulations and the conditional use permit that's put in place. And then they should notify me and the county commissioners of that transfer of ownership.
Sounds good. Good job. We've got a lot of work to do. We knew, I kind of, I know we all knew. I think it all became really relevant tonight with all we had.
It's nice to have starting.
Yeah, it is darn nice to have. We had, we had zero when we did the wind. This is very nice to have a good starting.
We did this at the end of the wind.
Yes.
Before I come home, boys.
Yeah.
That way you get things better.
Any other questions?
I see it as the biggest issue is the definitions and what are we going to regulate and what are we not going to regulate. So that would be your, your homework for May. We'll meet in May with some public hearings. And then if this board wants, we can further discuss it. I'll, I'll try and have some of the changes at least done by then. I'll, I'll highlight them in red, some of the changes that will be made. So you guys can see what, what's new information.
You're planning to have a, hold a public hearing in May.
For some other cases, not for this, not for this.
Oh, no. We're not, we're not.
You're rushing a little bit, Mark.
We're having, crystal glass, not going to be for this, definitely.
I have a scale question. You made a comment a while ago about 30 or 40 acres or whatever. And, I mean, I don't know how big the Ark Valley project is. Five acres or?
Seven.
Seven acres.
They leased or they bought, I guess actually purchased seven acres.
And I, I guess I wasn't thinking, I wasn't limiting my thinking, but I don't know if there's difference between a 10 acre project and a half section or a section. Do, do we need to be thinking about scale with this whole?
To me, no. I don't think there's anything different. I think, as I have written, if it's commercial, if you're selling the power somewhere else, then I think the surrounding property owners have a right to know that land use, you know, on that property could be changing to something other than residential or commercial. And so I did not make this distinction. If it's, if it's seven acres or 7,000 acres, you're selling the power somewhere else, then it's a conditional use permit. Now, I don't, I don't believe that there should be any kind of minimum acreage before, you know, we, we trigger a conditional use permit. I think it's, what triggers the conditional use permit is the definition.
I was thinking of just things that we talked about and if it would be different for a larger scale than a smaller scale.
No.
Like, like fencing. for a larger scale than a smaller scale, like a, like fencing.
Right. More, just longer fence, same height.
There, there may be more buildings for like onsite maintenance personnel or something like that, but I don't think there'd be anything different based upon land use, that that would change.
I don't know, I, I honestly, I wasn't thinking of a, you know, a full section project until you made that comment, and I don't know what we're going to see.
There's some of these, you know, that have gone in, they're 1,000 acres.
Yeah.
Couple of sections of ground, almost.
Yeah, I mean, this was, this was designed for the, the projects that are 2 to 4,000 acres, you know, what have you, but it also should apply to smaller ones, you know, for rural electric co-ops or others, other things like that, where, you know, these regulations should be applicable to them as well.
I think one of the main things that you really need to study on between now and the next one is that difference between residential, commercial, and the business in between, and what you're going to allow or regulate versus solar systems on the ground versus on roofs, that was, I think that's, that's going to be the biggest subject.
Yeah. Whether the height that you, whether that's adequate.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any other business for staff? Staff, do you have any other business?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion to the.
Take it.
Been moving a second to the journal in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.